Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for attending the Fairfield County Council regular meeting. Today is Monday, October 24th, 2022, calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I'm Shirley Green, Vice Chair of Fairfield County Council, sitting in for our chair modes and spell. I'll have approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairwoman, Chairperson.
Second.
Any discussion? We have to make, we have to...
I need to add a topic to executive session. I move that we amend the agenda under the executive session to include a legal update on alliance engineering and other litigation.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers? Ayes have it. Record the vote as five, five to zero. Okay? Invocation, Councilman Gil...
Let us bow our heads.
Let us, let us wait a second. I'll have to take another motion because it was amended.
You carry the motion as amended.
Okay. So we'll carry the motion as amended, we'll take another vote on that, all in favor? It'd be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers? All right, again, it's five, zero. Okay, Councilman Gilbert, thank you so much for invocation, please.
Let us bow our heads. Father, we come before you in the precious name of your living son, Jesus Christ, giving you thanks and honor right now, Lord God. We ask that you look down upon us right now, Lord God, that you allow your will to be done. We ask that you touch each and every one of us, Father, that we would do your will and not our will. We ask that you bless everyone under the sound of my voice, Lord God. We thank you for being God and being the God that you are. We pray this in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Councilman Gilbert. We'll have approval in minutes, and if we could approve them together, Administration and Finance of August 22nd, 2022, and the regular meeting, October 10th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers? All right, record, it's five to zero. Public presentations, none. Our first public comment session, all public comments made during this session must pertain to items on the agenda for which no public hearing is scheduled. Each speaker is allocated three minutes for comment. The total time allocated for the public comment portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. Those wishing to make public comment must sign up to do so prior to the council chair calling the meeting to order. The clerk of the council will make a public comment, sign-up sheet available at least 15 minutes prior to the scheduled start time of the meeting. Clerk, do we have any people to sign up?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, thank you, and members of council. We have several persons signed up to speak tonight. First person signed up is John Jones.
Is your microphone on, Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Master, but... You're on.
With just one finger, you're amazing. Okay, let's try it again. Good evening, John Jones, District Four. I really hadn't planned on speaking, I left, I left all my notes at home, but looking at this agenda that the council has put together, does have some questions. One, it's, you know, in public hearings, Section D, an ordinance to appropriate general fund revenues for the amount of $363,000 of the public's money to provide supplemental funding to the River Road Fire Station project, and that's it. Okay, so what is the River Road Fire Station project? What is it? What are the details of this? Where is the public's money being spent? That should be pretty simple, I mean, and that's all, that's all the residents that put you in office are asking for, explain what these things are, are being voted on. What are you doing with our funds, our money, the, the tax money, the, what do they call it, the millage rates? That's our money, and we put you up there entrusting you to be good stewards of it. So what is it? What are you doing with it? The other thing is, ordinances, resolutions, and order, first reading, land management, basically what you're wanting to do is you're wanting to change residential land into general business district land so that you can bring in something. But it's in conjunction and owned by somebody, or wanting to be in conjunction with somebody called Buckeye LLC. Again, the people, they want to know, who are we dealing with? You're bringing in an entity to work on the people's behalf using our money called Buckeye LLC. Who are they? Where are they from? And does anybody on this board have any affiliation with them? That's all we ask. That's it, it's simple. If you're going to represent us, represent us well. Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Renison.
Hi, that's Jennifer Breckhizen. That's okay, everybody gets it wrong. So I want to speak a little bit on the finances here. I'm so excited that in Section A, that you're actually increasing the pay for the detention officers and hiring new detention officers. I had heard a rumor that they were all going to quit at the same time, so I'm glad that that's not going to happen, that they're getting the increases that they need, and that this county is actually spending the money wisely on their employees, such as the detention officers. But when we move down to the salary and the sheriff's department here, I also heard a rumor that the county had a specific sheriff that they wanted implemented, and that they did not want to give a lot of money to Sheriff Montgomery because they didn't want him in here anymore. So anyway, those are rumors that are circulating. The real reason I wanted to speak is because a lot of this money that is put to good use here that I'm seeing was not put to good use prior to this, and I think a really good use of the money that is spent on council, council has been elected by the taxpayers in Fairfield County. In fact, the state gives money to Fairfield County, and federal government gives money to Fairfield County, which would mean that under the Constitution, I believe that all of the residents here should be able to speak freely at the county council meetings, and it should not be kept to the agenda only. I think there, if there is a woman in this district, her husband died waiting for an ambulance to come. I think that she should be able to come up here at any given point in time, at any meeting, and say to you that, hey, my husband died waiting on an ambulance. I want to address that with you. I feel like that would be a really good use of taxpayer time and money for this council to listen to their constituents, to listen to the people who voted for them, to listen to the people who pay their county council salaries. Otherwise, what's the point of a county council? Thank you.
Randy Bright.
This entire agenda tonight tells the sad and pathetic tale of a county council that doesn't listen to its employees, a county council that doesn't listen to its citizens. A county council, after 18 months, finally says, oh, it's election time, we better do something about it. And we've got a plethora of things that we've finally done something about that it's like putting a dam up after you've been flooded, and you've been warned for so long that we need a dam. Well, the dam has burst, we've lost dozens of good employees, tons of top department heads, and if it wasn't for Clarence Gilbert, we wouldn't even be having an executive session tonight, because Clarence Gilbert has had to push and push and push, saying, we got to take care of employees, we got to listen to them. Finally, we listened to them. Oh, and look what shows up on the executive session tonight. And who knows what else is in the survey, because it hasn't been released. Will you learn your lesson? I don't think so, because we've asked you to listen to us, we've told you this was coming, we told you we're going to get flooded, and we have. We've been flooded with inefficiencies because we've lost so many employees, we've been flooded with high costs because we've lost so many employees, and we've had to retrain new ones in these positions. And, and finally, if it wa, again, if it wasn't for Clarence Gilbert, we've had apparently an issue that is serious enough amongst our employees that we have to have an executive session to make a decision about, and call in outside help to make a decision about. That's priority one, is listening to the people. Arrogance and hubris is no way to run a county, and we've seen the results. This is why this county, not listening to the people, has not gotten anything done that wasn't carried through from the previous regime. This is why we have calculations on comparing salaries of the police department, but not including all the salaries of all the police in those counties. Makes a big difference. Alone, in, in Newberry, $2,202,000 is in Newberry City's budget, was, I didn't hear that included, in Newberry's amount when we were comparing to them. And they've got other towns besides that, but that's just another $2 million. We don't listen to the people about being thorough, we don't listen to the people about being prepared, and we get flooded, and then now we try to build a dam because of the election miracle.
Good evening, council members, Jeff Schaefer, District Four. I would like to address the citizens watching tonight on the public community meeting, because those folks at home have the same rights that we have sitting out here, to speak and to, to listen to what's going on. But unfortunately, let me just read what I've got, and I left my glasses home, so just give me a second, I'll get this done real quick. Folks at home have the same rights as we have since the council decided to close meetings because of COVID. And operated behind closed doors, things have gone clandestine, covert, and underhanded. To be politically correct, let me just say, the meetings have become discreet, tight-lipped. To be honest, the YouTube presentation is being controlled by the council chairman, who, as you folks can see, are preventing you at home from making any comments on this YouTube. And to praise the two men here for their brave and honest leadership, or to tell them that what you see happening here in a public is inconsolable, wretched, disgraced, and so appalling and sad, and that you folks at home, coming in just a few short days, will have the opportunity to remove Mr. Trapp and Mr. Bell, and hopefully you'll bring back two honorable council members, who I have to say still have their integrity intact, Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Pauli. You also have to call and email Mr. Bell and tell him he has no right to shut off the public comments section on YouTube. This is not Nazi Germany, and you can buy my silence with $50,000 any day of the week, and I want him to show up.
No one else signed up to speak, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. Next, we'll have public hearing, an ordinance to appropriate general fund revenue in the amount of $180,425 for the creation of three new officer positions for the Fairfield County Detention Center, and to increase the bonus for newly certified detention center officers from $1,000 to $1,500. The title of the ordinance printed on the agenda for the October 10th meeting mistakenly referred, referenced the sheriff's department, which was not and is not included in the text of the ordinance. Did anyone sign up to speak, ma'am?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, you need to open up the public hearing first.
Okay, this is 6:15 PM, we're opening up the, our public hearing.
Yes, ma'am, one person signed up to speak, Randy Bright.
Again, we speak about the election miracle, something we've been warned for a long time, lost good associates, know, know how many other problems have been created because we didn't listen to the associates or the employees, and we didn't listen to the people. The other issue with this, and there's so many issues in this entire agenda, the other issue for this is, which is consistent throughout, is we've allocated $180,000. What's the plan for next year? Where are we going to get that money next year? We haven't heard of that. Who does? You know this is going to be ongoing funding, who just throws out an ongoing project of $180,000 without planning? I haven't heard any resolution to this. A simple suggestion is that you take a vote, move $180,000 now into the restricted general fund portion dedicated to this project. That does two things. It sets money aside for now, for funding for such an ongoing project. It also keeps people from grabbing more money for non-essential basketball courts and things like that. It's typical, what governments do, it's typical what businesses do, it's typical what everybody does. So let's try typical for once, let's make a plan for the money, but if you don't have a plan, then let's set it aside for next year so we're not scrambling and waiting until another election miracle to get this money paid. Or we, we cut more money from the police department because we hadn't set aside this money, and then we robbed it because we wanted another basketball court. Plan smart, plan for the community, plan for the people, listen to the people, set this money aside now so we have it for this project in the future, and we don't have to rob some worthy projects, and police don't have to run on recaps and, and shaky cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. We'll close the public hearing at 6:17 PM. We'll open the next public hearing, the ordinance to appropriate general fund revenue in the amount of $486,535.79, to provide cost of living increases of 2%, 3%, and 4%, as applicable to the base salaries of all county employees, $100,000 to increase the operating budget of the sheriff's department for the purpose of additional salary adjustments within the department, and $20,000 to provide incentive bonuses to volunteer firefighters who meet the requirements of the volunteer incentive program administered by the Office of State Farm Marshal. This hearing will open at 6:18 PM. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, two persons signed up to speak, Jeff Schaefer.
You could have avoided this for a simple $50,000, but I'll hold it off. What I'm wondering is, who came up with $100,000? What if someone's earning $75,000? They don't get anything? Who, where, where is it written? Where did you get that information from? How did you come to that number and the percentages to be given to those people, based on what? Looking for it to come out of thin air. How do you come up with these things? Is there another county that determined that number so that it works out for everyone? You can explain that to people when we present these things, but, you know, we're all not looking at things and go, well, if you don't make $100,000, you're not getting it, and the number of $20,000 you want to give them, why didn't you make it 40,000? Or 10? What's the basis for the numbers that you come up with? Thank you.
Randy Bright.
I have several issues with this, and, and many of them coincide with, with Jeff's issue. Again, the first issue is, it's part of the ridiculous election miracle that should have been done a long time ago. The other part of it is, what's the plan for next year? Where are we going to get the money next year? If I recall, at the budget meetings, oh, we don't have any more money, we've cut everything to the bone, we're going to have to freeze salaries, et cetera. Well, then we, then we had the election miracle, and somehow, I guess we all go outside afterwards and see if there's any more money laying in the yard out there that we can make some funding. Anyway, you got a plan. No more election miracles, no more running off people and finally coming up with election miracles. You got a plan for this money. So how are you going to fund this for next year? It's nearly $500,000. If you could barely make a budget last year, how are you going to find another $500,000? Maybe, I got two suggestions. We entitle this basketball court, and then for next, next year, we'll be able to fund it. We'll have, generate much more enthusiasm. But on a more serious side, slightly more serious, again, you need to vote now to take $400,000 in the general fund, restrict it next year for this specific project, so it does get funded properly, and it, we don't have to pay out of our nose for, to sacrifice something else and some other employees for this. And the other thing is, I agree with Jeff, and this is kind of goofy, the, the cadence with the, with the percents. As I understand it, we're going to penalize the higher-ranked employees, the higher-tenured employees with a smaller percent. Now who, who rewards their good employees like that? What type of incentive is that? What world do we reward the good employees with smaller raises? What world do we ra, do we reward the tenured employees with smaller raises? What does that tell people down the road? What message does it send to them down the road? Well, i, if you stay with us for a while, we're going to give you smaller raises than the people that just come on board. What kind of message does that send to your associates? We got enough problems hiring, retaining people now, but as Jeff said, there's no rationale that explains these types of raises. There's no rationale about where the money's coming from, there's no rationale at all. We are not thinking these things through. Thank you.
The, the hearing will end at 6:23 PM. The next ordinance, to prohibit with support of the state traffic engineer, large trucks from traveling on Patrick Road S 2044 from US 321 to South Carolina 200. This hearing will open at 6:23 PM. Any speakers?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, two persons signed up to speak, Randy Bright, sir first.
I want to borrow a common phrase from John Jones. Why? Why are we doing this? I'm not saying it's good, I'm not saying it's bad, but as often with our, with our hearings and ordinances, how do we know if it's good or bad? Why? Who stands to benefit? Who stands to lose? Why are we doing this? Just throwing laws out there without any explanation to the public, that's no way to run a county. Do you guys know why? Or is this just catering to some special interest group? That's what you initially suspect when we see something like this, we're catering to some special interest group. Who would it harm? Who would it help? It may be good, it may not be good. How can we judge? You've got to put details in here. You've got to think and realize, and we're getting more and more people out, these ordinances mean something to us. We're in the county. As you know, our county pays with all revenues, one of the highest per capita in the state, and we deserve to know why, why we're spending the $43 million or whatever it is a year, and why we're doing this on these specific issues. Please have an explanation, and just instead of throwing these things out and, and let the chips fall where they may. The county citizens deserve more. We deserve transparency, we deserve the ability to input, but if we don't have a clue what this is about, then how can we give you input? How can we give you constructive input? And how can we possibly vote for you in November? Thank you.
Jeff Schaefer.
My price is going to go up. I'm just looking at the ordinances in general real quick, and I don't know if this is legal, so I'd ask Mr. Boykin if it's legal to have the first reading by title only of ordinance number 803, and the second reading by title, ordinance number 803, in the same night? How do you do that? Do you get a vote first, one week, think about it, see if it goes well, discuss it? Maybe we won't go to the second reading, but we have the first and second reading of the same ordinance on the first page. Is that a typo, a mistake, an error, was somebody not watching this? And just in general, don't we have enough ordinances in Fairfield County to keep us busy for a while? busy for a while? I mean, one week after another, there's always an ordinance for something. And I'm not sure whether we need them all. Haven't we carried out over the years 500 ordinances? When does it stop? When do taxpayers go, "Hey, stop. We don't need any more ordinances. We need firemen and policemen and EMS." After we have that settled, we'll talk about ordinances. The tax people and to change things and play games with the law, we don't need that. We need what people pay taxes for, services. And we're not getting that. And ordinances in general that repeat themselves for a first and second reading in one meeting? I'm not going to use any foul language because you didn't pay me enough to shut my mouth. But good night, folks. That's it for me.
At 6:27, we close the public hearing. The next public hearing for an ordinance to appropriate general fund revenue in the amount of $363,000 to provide supplemental funding for the River Road Fire Station project. The hearing opens at 6:27 PM.
One person, one person signed up to speak. Randy Bright.
Constant refrain, as I said, there's a lot of telling ordinances and hearings here tonight. I agree with Jeff. It's very confusing. We've got, as far as ordinances and hearings and first ordinances, but it's also first hearings. Not sure we're following protocol. But nevertheless, they tell a tale of a county council that's gone off the wheels, and it's been off for quite some time. And this is just another perfect example. What is this project? Who does it benefit? What's it going to do? Why is it going to cost this much? And where's the revenue going to come from? And will there be a continuing need for the revenue? So who, what, when, where, or why? None of those questions are answered. And who benefits from it? Why do we need it? We just throw this stuff out, and yet we miss so many good things and way things. What's priorities? Are we, yes, I would say a fire station is a priority, but I can't say that because I don't know what we're going to do. Maybe we're going to plant a new lawn in front of it. Or maybe we're going to hire some people? Maybe we're going to have new equipment that we need? What are we going to do? We want to know what you're going to do with the money because we've seen ordinances before that are just thrown out there where the money could have been better spent elsewhere. And that's what the citizens deserve to know, is why are we throwing this money out? And can we use our money elsewhere? Because remember, at the last two budgets, "We don't have any more money. We don't have any more money. We're going to have to freeze positions. We're going to have to do this and that." Oh, until election time comes, then we find it. I know that's a familiar refrain, but that's true. And that's why you've got to be upfront and honest. Upfront, honest, and accurate. Why do we need this money? What are we going to do with it? Where is it going to go? Who stands to benefit? And what other alternatives did we think about for this, for either the fire station or for health, safety, and welfare in general? What are, what are their options for this money? We're just throwing money without any explanations to us. If you were department heads or the board of a company, large business, you wouldn't be anymore if this is the best you could do. No offense, but... But take a look at yourselves. This whole agenda is about not planning, not caring, not listening to people, and not looking forward. Thank you.
The public hearing ended at 6:31 PM. Next, we're down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. The first reading by title only, and the reason that this is done both in the same day, is that it was deferred from the first to the second reading at the last meeting. Ordinance number 803, and ordinance to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 and the related zoning map to provide for the zoning reclassification from RC Rule Community District to B2O General Business District for a 4.44-acre parcel described as TMS 077-00-00-023-000, owned by Buckeye LLC.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposers? It shows that there's a five to zero vote. Okay, now, second reading, ordinance number 803, ordinance to consider request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 and the related zoning map to provide for the zoning reclassification from RC Rule Community District to B2 General Business District for a 4.44-acre parcel described as TMS 077-00-00-023-000, owned by Buckeye LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Discussion?
Yes. First of all, having a first and second reading is highly unusual, something that has never been done. And I would like for Mr. Whitaker, if he would, to really explain to us exactly, you know, why would we put it on the same, you know, on the same agenda? And to explain a little bit about...
And if Mr. Steins can come up, please?
Good evening, Council. Daniel Steins. Can I ask, entertain any questions for this matter?
Yes, would you kind of explain to us a little bit about what you're asking us to do?
Certainly. So generally and always, the hearings for rezonings, variances, special exceptions, so on and so forth, are going to be at the Planning Commission level or the Board of Zoning Appeals. This matter for Buckeye LLC was actually heard twice in public hearing, once in May and then once last month in September. So the applicants requested a rezoning request from RC to B2 based on not necessarily the zoning issue, but a density issue. They're wanting to expand. This is an existing storage unit facility, mini-storage, what we refer to as dead storage or dry storage. They've been at the Lake District for many years, and they're wanting to expand their business. In order to do so, it was more lucrative to go to a B2 zoning to give them a greater density because they're constrained by the RC zoning on the density they could have. So they have 4.44 acres, but they would only have been allowed to use 25% of that property versus in B2, they can use 60%. So that's the purpose. The applicant had requested the rezoning. The Planning Commission approved it last month, six-zero unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Steins, was the necessary notification sent out to surrounding residents in the area pertaining to this public hearing and this rezoning of this property?
Yes, sir. This actually got double the amount of notices because, again, it was heard in May and was sent out notices at that point. The standard advertising requirement is notices put in a generally circulated newspaper, which it was ran in The Voice and The Chronicle. It was also posted at the property as well. They got letters. Then we re-advertised in September for the hearing in last month's Planning Commission meeting.
In the paper we received, it states that the Planning Commission unanimously approved the request at a six-to-zero vote. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers? The vote is five to zero.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We have the third and final reading for ordinance number 7999 and ordinance to appropriate general fund revenue in the amount of $180,425 for the creation of three new officer positions for the Fairfield County Detention Center and to increase the bonus for newly certified detention center officers from 100, I'm sorry, $1,000 to $1,500. The title of the ordinance printed on the agenda for the October 10th meeting mistakenly referenced the sheriff's department, which was not and is not included in the text of this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, discussion? All in favor? Opposers? The vote is five-zero. The third and final reading, ordinance number 800, and ordinance to appropriate general fund revenue in the amount of $486,535.79 to provide cost of living increases to 2%, 2%, 3%, and 4% as applicable to the base salaries for all county employees. $100,000 to increase the operating budget of the sheriff's department for the purpose of additional salary adjustments within the department. And $20,000 to provide incentive bonuses to volunteer firefighters who meet the requirement of the volunteer incentive program administered by the Office of State Fire Marshal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Whitaker, I guess it was stated earlier from some citizens. Can you go over how we came up with the 2%, 3%, and the 4%?
Any additional discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposers? Let the record show the vote is five to zero. The third and final reading for ordinance number 801, ordinance to prohibit with support of the state traffic engineer, large trucks from traveling on Patrick Road S-2044 from US 321 to SC 200. Any discussion? Oh, first, we need a motion.
Full moon.
Any discussion?
I think this might be something of Mr. Gilbert or Mr. Whitaker can explain the reason this ordinance is on the agenda.
Yes, I had a call from some citizens in that area that said that they had tried to get in contact with Mr. Trout, but it was unsuccessful. And they said the reason they wanted this ordinance was because of the large trucks traveling on this narrow road, and it's real dangerous, and they were speeding. So they asked that, you know, we would look into possibly forbidding heavy trucks from cutting through here. They were making, the large truck was making a shortcut through that area. So they were asking that we would look into the possibility of having DOT look into putting a sign saying, "No truck through."
Madam Chair, I think it's kind of discriminatory to truck drivers if they want to take a shortcut to get home. The road, I drove the road a week ago, and it was, they was logging on the road, got big trucks traveling on and down. So why wouldn't the truck driver still be able to drive that road to get, make a shorter distance home to save on gas? And furthermore, no one tried to get in touch with me, but normally it's public record. So if they got in touch with Mr. Gilbert, I guess that maybe they're friends of Mr. Gilbert. So either way, I oppose it. I think it's kind of discriminatory to truck drivers.
Well, it wasn't any friends of mine. It was just constituents of yours. That's what they told me, and it's not funny, Mr. Roseborough. But that was the constituents of yours that said that they tried to get in touch with you. I can't dispute it.
But either way, Madam Chair, I oppose it. I still say it's discriminatory to the truck drivers. Because the road is, like I said, they logging the road right now. So what's the difference?
Okay, we'll have a vote. All in favor? Opposers?
Nay.
Let's record the vote as four to one. Okay, third and final reading, ordinance number 802, and ordinance to appropriate general fund revenue in the amount of $363,000 to provide supplemental funding for the River Road Fire Station project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, please.
Okay. So for the River Road Fire Station, the request for bids to construct the River Road Fire Station closed on September 1st, 2022. The county received two bids on the project. Hillman Design Build LLC was the lowest responsive bidder at $697,354. There is $275,000 remaining in the project budget. Staff will work with the project engineer and contractor on additional ways to reduce project costs. It came up previously. We did look at some redesigns for the building. We've reduced it by one of the bays and looking at other areas that we can try to get closer within that budget. So we have done that. The county anticipates a donation, which we'll hear about later tonight, from Duke Energy toward the cost of the fire station. And so we're asking council to consider the transfer of $363,000 from fund balance towards the additional cost of the fire station.
And we should also note that $340,000 was approved earlier for a fire tanker.
That is correct. Through the ARPA funds that... Through the ARPA funds that council approved previously is for the new tanker that would also go at this fire station.
Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers? Let's record the vote is five to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarifications. Board and commission minutes for information only. Disabilities and special needs board for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, board and commission appointments, none. Old business, none. New business, none. County administrators report.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair. We should have someone from Luckstone here to make a presentation in support of our, um, the Ridgeway Recreation Center. If you would come forward, please.
We're honored today to present thirty thousand dollars to Fairfield County, um, to help support a place where, uh, folks around the community can come together and learn, grow, and play together.
Excellent. All right. So next we have someone from Duke Energy to make a presentation in support of the River Road, River Station. All right.
Good evening. My name is Tyson Blanton. I'm Duke Energy Government Community Relation. Um, I have a twenty thousand dollar check here from Duke Energy, a donation to support the River Road Fire Station, which is located to, near our Molly Creek and Colonel's Creek access areas that we're very proud to support the Lake Community on Fairfield County. Um, so thank you for having me today and for, um, to surely for starting this donation process.
Thank you so much, both Luckstone and Duke Energy.
Yes. All right. The third item on my agenda is the data collection next steps. I'm gonna read a prepared statement as we go into executive session. I acknowledge that there is interest in the results of the employee survey that was requested by council member Gil- Clarence Gilbert. While Mr. Gilbert indicated that a survey of county employees should be conducted, he did not provide a clear purpose of the survey. Nonetheless, the Human Resource Office prepared and distributed, distributed an employee survey. As administrator, I did not involve myself in the development of or in the circulating of the survey. However, upon receipt of the feedback gathered during the survey and the controversy surrounding certain questioned personnel actions, I wanted to have the matter reviewed by legal counsel to make sure that the survey could not find its way into being used against the county as part of any personnel litigation. Also, we were already in the process of having an outside consultant conduct an employment audit of the Human Resources Office comply- compliance with generally accepted procedures for dealing with personnel matters within the last several years. As a result, we wanted to determine whether the survey raised concerns about the processes and procedures related to human resources within the last few years. Specifically, I'm concerned about potential claims against the county that could be raised coming from certain adversarial personnel actions. Upon review by legal counsel, it was determined that the survey within the context of certain pending, threatened, or potential claims warranted legal advice regarding the handling of the survey. The survey will be released in the near future as part of a specific policy and procedure recommendations identified within the HR audit. At this time, it would be inappropriate to release the survey publicly without addressing the items identified in the HR audit. That's my statement.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Uh, Mr. Whitaker, can I get, Ms. Williams, to give me an update on the walking trail at the Willie Robinson Park and also the community park in Blackstock?
The work with the walking trail, I believe is, if it's not, is pretty much complete. They were waiting to get the site stabilized. So I'll verify with the, I was supposed to get a project update today, whether or not the site was stabilized, but last week everything was done except for that. With Blackstock, I did ride out there on Friday. I did see that they had started surveying, but they have not started clearing yet. So I'll get an updated date on when they'll start clearing, but they did go out, I saw the flags from where they started the survey on the Blackstock Park.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Whitaker. Uh, clerk, the council's report, none. County council time. Anyone want to speak? Mr. Gilbert?
On Friday, October the fourteenth, my mom had a emergency medical situation. We called the EMS to come to her home for medical attention. Fortunately, the response time was within fifteen minutes. I would like to acknowledge paramedics Maria, Marie, and Hannah for their extreme professionalism, caring, and their willingness to tell us exactly what was going on with our mom. I want the public to know how important these people and their services are. When your loved one is in an emergency situation, they respond with the desire to do whatever it takes to make sure that the patient receives the best care. It is important that we, as council members, make sure that they have the money for personnel, tools, and equipment to respond when they are called on. My family was fortunate that they were close. They could have been in another part of the county and no telling what could have have, what could have transpired with my mom's situation. They're doing the best that they can with what they have. We must give EMS, the Fire Department, and Sheriff Department the equipment they need to perform their jobs. Again, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Marie and Ms. Hannah for your awesome job.
Thank you. Any other comment? If not, um, executive session, the following statement is provided in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of I'm sorry, let me start over again in case you couldn't hear me. The following statement is provided in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Subsequent to executive session, council may take action on matters discussed in executive session. Need a motion to?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's, the vote is five to zero. Thank you. We'll now go into executive session. And, uh, it is now
Let's announce the topics.
Oh, sorry, I didn't announce the topics. Personnel matter, discussion of possible dis- discipline or demotion of one or more employees as a result of a personnel audit to the county pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated three thirty dash four dash seventy A one. Legal advice, discussion of negotiations for a proposed or existing contract regarding the development of recommendations for remedial act, remedial actions based upon the results of a personnel audit and survey received by the county pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated thirty dash four seventy A one. And, um, the topic, we have a legal, uh, concern about the update on the lines of engineering at all litigation. Okay. All right. That's provided as information. We'll now go into executive session.[1221.78] We'll now go into executive session.
...
Okay, I need, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
There was no action taken in executive session. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Poses? All right, five to zero.